Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 21st School Committee Meeting, School Committee Meeting in order 6:34. Maek Akoros is ill this evening as well as Tom Devon, so they will not be in attendance. Ms. Saros is on her way, just so you know. Before we go into Routine Matters, the agenda that was published the beginning of last week, when we posted the meeting, had our public comment at the beginning. Our public comment is going to remain at the end of the meeting this evening. We do have a policy that we're going to be discussing at the end of this meeting when we get to the Policy and Education Subcommittee update. That may be a change. We may be putting the the public comments for future meetings at the beginning, but again, for this meeting, it is going to be at the end of the meeting. So moving to Routine Matters, approval of open session meetings from March 7th. Do I need any discussion? No discussion. Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemay. I have a second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to Communications and Commissions, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we'll start with Ms. Miller, who has an update on the Credit for Life Fair.
Great, thank you. And if we can advance the slide, we can take a look at photos. So I thank you, Mr. Lee and Chairperson Heager. I wanted to update the committee that we did have a very successful Credit for Life Fair that was open to the entire senior class. It took place last Thursday, March 17th. And actually, our two student representatives that we have on School Committee with us this evening were in attendance. So as you can see on your screen, I just took a couple of snapshots that I thought really captured sort of the essence of the day. We have a little bit of confusion in one of the photos. We have a lot of excitement being with friends. In another photo, we have excitement. In the middle photo, a couple of students were spinning a wheel to see sort of their fate, what they were going to be given in terms of their luxury booth. And then over on the right-hand side, we also had, this was actually our Rotary Club booth, which was for community service. And students were either selecting to make a donation to local charities or to to sign a card that was actually going to troops overseas. And so you see that on the bigger poster, you could see that a lot of students ended up selecting that. Like I had updated the committee two weeks ago at our past School Committee Meeting, this was the first year that we were going to be hosting this fair for the entire senior class. So again, it was a great event. I am thankful to say that everything went very smoothly. We got all students on the bus, transported over to the tomorrow room, and everybody came back on campus. And then we actually finished out the day with the stand-up pep rally at the end of the day, which was a coincidence that those two events were happening on the same day, but certainly a really nice way to finish off the evening. I don't know if the students have anything they want to say about Credit for Life Fair.
Yeah, it was a very educational thing that we could do. And it was definitely eye-opening as to like spending I need to get under control before I venture into my adulthood. But yeah, it was very, very interesting, and I learned a lot about it.
Yeah, same with me. It was very eye-opening on a budget. And it was, I enjoyed it.
That's great. The students did a fantastic job. I want to thank again all of the community sponsors that we had, including two members of our Rotary Club that are sitting in the audience today. And we'll be hearing above, hearing from them on a different matter a little bit later. But we certainly could not have pulled off this event without the cooperation of the teachers who were chaperoning, the students who were excited, and again, all of our community sponsors that that were supporting the event.
Some other accommodations, if I can pull this off correctly. The Massachusetts Art Educators Association puts out a call every year for art teachers to present work via exhibition. This year, it was done virtually. And I wanted to just show you some of the submissions from our Braintree East Middle School. Just indulge me for a second here. So again, these are East Middle School students, and these are some of the pieces of art that they submitted. See how fancy I can get with this. Obviously, their full names are not here. This just literally just came out today, so I don't have their last names, but I recognize talent in my own absence of it. But again, these are East Middle School students who submitted their work through this organization. I find the work to be entirely impressive. There's probably about 35 communities that participated in it, if I read it correctly. If you are interested, you can go to this website. And down in the bottom left, you can see you can leave a little fan note for the students to compliment them on their work, if you are so inclined. But on behalf of Ms. Campinsato and Mr. Shan, again, just some excellent work by our students that I thought was worth sharing with you this evening, even though I only have a limited amount of information about the event.
I would be so inclined to comment. What was the name of the program, Mr. Lee?
It's the M A E A, which is the Massachusetts Art Educators Association. Their website is massarted.com/ youthartmonth. And again, 15 of our students submitted this work, and you can find it on the gallery number one Braintree.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Going back to our other items, you will find in your folders just a couple of updates for your viewing pleasure. One of is from the SSEC, their update for March. Also, the MASC update for February. You will also find, for informational purposes, the FinCon minutes and the Policy and Ed minutes that have been approved. And that is my communications accommodations.
Excellent. All right, we're going to go a little out of order at this point. We are going to invite Dr. Peter Kersberg and the President of the Rotary Denver Gibbs to come up, and they have a donation for Braintree Public Schools. It's always wonderful to see you, Dr. Kang.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and Mr. Lee. And before it gets started, I'm Peter Kersberg, by the way, past president of the Rotary Club. I want to echo Ms. Miller and the students' comments on the Credit for Life. There were a lot of students there, but they managed to get to all of the booths, I think, most successfully at the end. And it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful program and has been, I think, for 12 years now. So first, thanks for the opportunity to come before you this evening. We're with the Braintree Rotary Club, which is a community service organization. And Braintree will be celebrating 100 years this coming, coming year. So I know there are some new School Committee members, so congratulations to the elected and re-elected members of the School Committee. I'm here with Denver Gibbs, the current president, for the next three months, and then he will become a past president, the best position to have. And we're pleased to be able to present to the music department on behalf of the Braintree Rotary Club, as well as the Rotary District 7950, who helped fund some of the purchase for zildjian crash cymbals for the music department, as well as some Prac 5 practice pads. The total amount is $1,335. So as you may know, Braintree has, Rotary Club has contributed quite a bit to the Braintree Schools' years. In addition to supporting the music program this year, we've purchased a number of large instruments for them. We actually, one year, this is a while back, got a new at the high school. We support the literacy program and have for a number of years with dictionaries and thesauruses for third and fifth graders. I hope to still have yours. And two years ago, we purchased for fourth graders a Dragon in the Bag book, which was a town-wide literacy initiative. We supported the athletic department for a number of years. There used to be banners up on the gym. I'm not sure they're still there, but Braintree Rotary had a banner there. They contributed. When there were live art displays, and I think there are at town hall, we purchased the stands that the, the art goes on. Provide scholarships to graduating seniors, not just from Braintree High, but from any student from Braintree that attends a high school or a high school outside of Braintree. The Adopt a Family program at the high school around the holidays. We're involved with the Interact Club, which is the high school version of Rotary. And for their 25th anniversary, which was a few years ago, we helped them with a project where they collected household items in tubs to be presented to young adults who are aging out of foster care and were going to be living on their own. And so this was a little something that was, you know, a successful program with the Interact Club. Donate to many of the town's activities, town sports, athletic teams, made sizable donations to the food pantry, particularly at the beginning of the pandemic. So we are really committed to supporting the Braintree Schools, among many other kinds of donations that we make, all volunteers. We raise our money through a golf tournament. And now the Electronic Waste Day that Denver was able to pick up last year from the library, they kind of gave it up. We've taken it over. We used to run successful spelling bee and trivia events, adults, in collaboration with the South Shore Plaza. That was a really big fundraiser for us. So we're really involved with the community. We're excited about it, and we're really enthusiastic about being able to contribute to the music department. Their show choir comes, maybe it's more than the show choir, but it used to be the show choir comes every year around the holidays, and we get a big crowd, and they sing for us. And so we're happy to be able to be here this evening and make, make the presentation to you.
I think you said a lot. I just want to say thank you. I'll spot. That's true.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just on.
Come on up.
Step up.
Matt Socktell, who is the Director of Music.
Director of Music. Just on behalf of the music departments, extremely thankful for the donation. It'll definitely help benefit and boost the percussion program in the instrumental section. And really, really excited to put all those instruments to use. And thank you for all your help, and we're glad to be there to spread some holiday cheer for you. Thank you.
Glad to answer any questions, if you have any, or.
Any questions? I have a few comments. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, I miss the spelling bee. I've bought many mulligans for the Braintree Public Schools teachers team so that they could move along in the, in the competition. My son was a recipient of the scholarship, the Rotary Scholarship, years and years ago. So I'm very grateful, and I'm not afraid to ask now. I know it's only March, but may I get an invitation to come to see the show choir sing?
Absolutely.
I've gone in the past, so again, my son was a member of the show choir as well. So I have a lot of great memories and all the good work that the, that the Braintree Rotary does for the town, for the schools, not just for the schools, but as you said, for the town. So thank you for all that you do, all of you, the entire team is. And you also contribute to the Braintree Day as well, don't you? Do you volunteer for the Braintree Day as well?
We actually started the cleanup day.
Okay.
Braintree, and has slowly been taken over by the town, but that was a Braintree Rotary initiative.
Initiative too, yes. So again, thank you all for all that you do. So we have two gifts from you this evening. We have the Braintree gift, as you said, I'm going to pronounce it incorrectly. They donated one pair of, how do you say it? Zildjian. Zildjian.
What's the name?
Crash cymbals and five Remo practice pads and stands to the Braintree Public Schools music department. Do I have a motion to accept?
To move.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemay and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. And a second donation from the Rotary Club again tonight, a $250 check for the, towards the Credit for Life. So thank you again for that as well. Do I have a motion to accept the $250 donation from the Braintree Rotary Foundation to be used for Credit for Life?
To move.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemay and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Again, thank you both. Thank you all. It was very nice to meet you, Mr. Gibbs, and thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Nice seeing everybody.
All right, we have two more gifts to schools. So we have another check in the amount of $250 from Toyota or Braintree, also for the Credit for Life. Do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemay, a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And the last gift to schools is $35.25 from Bay State Textiles.
To move.
Motion by Ms. Cobblemay. Second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on. Budget update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I thought we spent a few moments tonight just bringing everybody up to terms of where we are in the budget process. As you all know, there is some ways to go before we get to a final budget and move it on to the town. Just as an update in terms of where we stand right now. Just to kind of frame the conversation, as many of you recall, last year, we did make several budget reductions in the process of putting together the school budget. In those reductions initially, we're reading specialists, math specialists, writing teachers at the middle school, reductions to the central office staff, and enrollment, which I'll get into in a bit, as it relates to other positions that were directly affected by enrollment. So in the, the budget process last year, these were cuts that we began to take. Some of the cuts from a budgetary standpoint were really driven by declining enrollments. And enrollment reductions often, you know, include reductions or shifts in resources that we would make in any given year. As populations of kids go through certain grade levels or populations of kids come through with a specific need, we move resources around to make sure that we have adequate class sizes and adequate supports for our students. So taking reductions in terms of moving resources away from a given area is not uncommon. What was a little bit different last year was that we were literally taking these positions as reductions from the overall budget. We were not moving the resource. We simply were not filling it. The majority of these positions that I'm going to walk you through really related to declines at the middle school level, where we reduced by 10 positions staffing at both middle schools, elementary school enrollment declines. We reduced seven sections of classroom teachers, almost all through attrition. So these were positions that were lost, but these are people who, you know, retired, resigned, moved on to something else. So those, those positions were gone, but the, the individuals who were in those positions were not seeking employment in the following year. We reduced the preschool by two sections, and we reduced the science at Braintree High School by a section. And where you can see the asterisks at the middle in the elementary school, once the budget was passed and time went on, we were able to make certain adjustments and bring certain things back. But as far as the initial budgetary process, those are where the cuts occurred. As we went through that process, which you can see in the first column where it says FY 202, MOE, Maintenance of Effort, Rollover Budget. Going into the budget process, we anticipated that we were going to need $76,659,152 to maintain the programming that we had after the 2021 school year. When we went through the process of reducing the budget and getting to a place where it was affordable and practical for the, the community, the proposed budget we ultimately put in front of this, this body and the town was a budget of $71,574,118, which you can see in the next column was a reduction from the Maintenance of Effort rollover budget of a little over $5 million. That reduction of $5 million represented a negative 7% decrease to the budget. As you also know, we were able to use some ESER monies to cover that deficit this year, which I'll get into in a little bit. In the broader conversation, as we get into this school year's budget or next year's school year's budget, you know, one of the things that we are continuing to monitor is enrollment. So what you have on the screen right now are enrollment trends over the last little over 10 years. And what I would highlight is if you look in around 2018, we hit, in essence, a high watermark at 5,700 students in the district. These numbers exclude students who are in special ed programs, out-of-district programs. So that number is actually higher, but for, you know, this purpose, these are kids who are attending the schools here in town. So 5703 was the high watermark in 2018. And what you can see in 2019, 2020, it hovers right around that same number. And I call your attention to the fact that these numbers are from our October 1 counts. So when you look at 2020, which again has an asterisk next to it, that's the year that COVID is going to come, but in October, it has not arrived yet. So the, the enrollment in October of that year was 5667, which again was right in line with 2019, 2018. And then, as you all know, COVID comes, and in 2021, in October, that 5667 had dropped down to 5355. So a significant decrease in population of students, I would argue, directly related to COVID and its impact. And then in 2022, this is, this number comes from October 1st of 2021, so the beginning of this current school year, and that number is 5244. So it even went down from last year to this year. And if I look at 2020 to 2022, in essence, it's a reduction in student population of over 400 students. And that's significant, and it has a significant impact on how we do business, as I can show you further. So again, the last 10 to 12 years, these are enrollment trends. And I, this slide breaks it up by grade levels. So the blue line is grades K-4, red lines, grades 5 to 8, the yellow lines are grades 9 to 12. And what you would have seen is in or around 2016, the elementary level begins to drop down. A bubble is going through. It's leaving the elementary school. It's going to the middle school. And you can see both the middle school line and the high school line in 2016 begin an upward climb. So although enrollment is declining in the elementary grades, it's increasing in the middle school and the high school ages. And then you get to that 2020 year and that midpoint, 2021, you can see the numbers across the board drop down. So we take a further reduction in elementary numbers. We take a further reduction in middle school numbers, and we take a further reduction in high school numbers. And, you know, the last obvious line is the current year, where again, we are down approximately 400 students. And so what we were once looking at, which was enrollments dropping in the elementaries but increasing in the middle schools, has turned out, because of COVID, to be drops across the board in all our areas. The impact in terms of section sizes, these are elementary sections, current year from January of this year. And I'd call your attention to just the small size of these sections. Typically, we would run sections somewhere between 19 and 24 at the elementary level, typically dependent upon the age level of the students, smaller in grades 1 and 2, slightly higher in grades 3, 4, and 5. But we have very few sections at all within the district that are beyond 20. You can see Highlands has a small number of them. Couple of other schools have individual sections that might be 20 or slightly higher. But across the board, our average class size is around 17 at this point in time. Again, I would make the case that this is directly related to COVID. You know, that we still have 400 kids who left our schools around the pandemic. Some may return in the short term, some may return in the long term, some may not return. Those are unknowns. But in terms of section sizes, this is what we're looking at as we stand here today, or sit here today. We were asked by Senator, Senator Timotee's office to provide him an indication of what our budget priorities would be if additional funding was available to the state. This was a submission that we provided his office. One of the biggest things that we would want to see is revenue replacement. And I'll get into this number in a bit. But to make this year's budget work, we are using $3.1 million one-time money that we took from the ESER funds that were provided by the federal government. When that money is gone, that money is truly gone. And, you know, that, that number represents cuts that we would have to make if we cannot find another way to find those spots. So revenue replacement to local communities would be incredibly beneficial. As, you know, all of us know, local economies took a huge hit because of COVID, and they take time to recover. And so the hope would be that if they were able, the state could provide us enough revenue replacement to tide us over and feather out that, you know, recovery to a point where those two numbers, our budget and the town's ability to pay that budget, meet once again without that deficit of $3.1 million. Within the operating budget, our budget priorities would include mental health, service, and support. We have had a lot of students and staff return to school very traumatized by what took place during COVID. We are running additional social, emotional programming in, in the district right now to address some of those needs. But it is a need as great in regular education as it is special education, and we are expending a lot of resources to try to keep those kids well and keep them in school and keep them productive. So if it was available to us, we would want to expand on that work if the state was in a position to give us more. We're also target remediation. Because of the COVID learning experience, many of our students have fallen behind academically. We have been attempting to, to provide that remediation support with the, the resources that we presently have, and I think our staff has done an excellent job doing it. But it's, it's going to take some time to get kids back to where we need them to be. You know, in the past, we've been able to offer programming, both before and after school, for kids who wanted some additional support. We would love to be able to do that more so that we can give them all the opportunities possible to, to catch up and be in a place where we want them to be academically as they continue on in their education. During the pandemic, we, there was grant money that was made available, both through the federal and, and state governments, that allowed us to run vacation programs and summer programs. So we, during, I believe it was April Vacation last year, we ran academic support programs for kids who were in need. And during the summer, we expanded summer programming, both at Spark and at the middle and high school level, to give additional support for students, to help them catch up, catch up a little bit before they returned to school. At this moment in time, those same grants are not available to us. We are hopeful that they might become available to us. But if the Senator's Office is able to have that opportunity, again, would be tremendous for our students. We saw a huge benefit to it, to those programs for our kids who participated. And again, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to catch kids up. The last priority that we identified to the Senator's Office is about circuit breaker. As you know, that relates to extraordinary special education costs. It is based on, on funding the schools, a percentage of the expenses that we share for students who are receiving certain services over a certain threshold. You know, in a perfect world, it's, the reimbursement comes in around 75%, but that, that percentage really fluctuates, given the state's ability to pay. So it would be very helpful to us if they could fully fund it at that 75% in the current year. You know, again, special ed services for all our students has been a need this year. And out-of-district placements are something that we've experienced to a certain degree. So that circuit breaker being fully funded, again, is critical for us. So this is where we stand today. The approved budget for the current year, that is, the, the budget that was voted on by this body is $71,947,500. That is the town's operating cost to us. However, what we are spending this year, the actual budget we're operating under, is $75,56,662. And that number is possible because we are using those federal offsets that I described, the $3.1 million to make up that difference between 71.9 and 75. And again, that's one-time money. Our first look at the budget, a rollover Maintenance of Effort, that is adding nothing, that is keeping what we have. The first projection was $77,76,500. The first projection was seventy seven million seventy six thousand seven hundred and two dollars, which would be an increase over the seventy one nine forty seven. Again, that's the voted budget. So seventy seven oh seventy six is five million one hundred and twenty nine thousand two hundred and two dollars more than the seventy one nine forty seven, or seven point one three percent increase. However, we have been able, through Esser and circuit breaker monies, been able to to save, for lack of a better expression, two point two million dollars that we can dedicate to that budget going into next year, which reduced the the operating budget down to seventy four eight seventy seven oh eight seven, or an increase of two point nine million dollars, which is a four percent increase over the seventy one nine forty seven budget. You know, in conversations with the town and seeing where we stand with them and its ongoing work, we have weekly meetings with the mayor's office. So this is all a work in progress. We came back at a reduced number of seventy four three seventy four, four thirty three, which is an increase of two million four twenty six nine thirty three over that seventy one million nine, which is a three point three seven increase. And we're able to do that, if you go back to the slides I showed you related to enrollments. There are some efficiencies we can realize that, which brings our operating costs down. We believe we can take those those efficiencies through attrition. So, you know, it'd be a reduction in class sections, but again, the hope is that it affects no person who's looking to be employed with us next year. And again, that three point three seven is where we currently stand today. The work will continue throughout the next month. Again, constant communication with the mayor's office to find out where we stand with relation to the other town budgets that are going on. I believe, as you all know, we're in negotiations with all of our unions this year. And so that's another factor that we'll have to consider as we go through this work. But again, as of today, this is where we stand. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the committee?
Through the chair. What was ideas for the revenue replacement? Were there any?
It would have to come, again, we, the Senator's office reached out to us and asked, what do you need?
Right.
And our response is, we we need some one time money to help us get through this period of time. You know, the the town's economy, you know, I'm sure you all listen to the state of the town. There are a lot of things in the pipeline that could have a tremendous impact on revenue to the town, but they're not coming tomorrow. And so being able to feather out that recovery over a couple of years would allow us to maintain our budgets over that same amount of time. If at any point, you know, and again, I compliment Mr. Cronin for putting us in a position to have that two point two million dollars, a lot of frugality that went into that. But he's he's not a magician. At some point, he's going to come up empty and at this point, we'd be looking at two point two million dollars in reductions. So it's a race, for lack of a better expression, between economic recovery and our need to continue to the budgets until that comes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I have extended an invitation to Senators Timolty and Keenan and Representative Cusack at some point, once they know where their budget is as well. And if they are able to help us in any way, have them come and and present to a school committee meeting. So we will coordinate with their offices and try to figure out what what is a good time for them to come and speak to us directly. The Finance and Operations Subcommittee has has been following this. We're meeting every couple of weeks. So we're, and as Mr. Lee said, he and I meet with the mayor on a weekly basis to talk about these numbers. And again, what the town looks like and and where we're going to fit in the overall town budget. So it's very fluid and we will update, you know, every school committee meeting going forward.
This is, last slide is about capital. Capital is a separate budget. It's actually due to go in front of Ways and Means shortly. Typically, in a given year, we we get about a million dollars from the town for capital improvements. A lot of the expenditures that that you'll see up here are things that we do year over year. But ESCO was part of the project where we put new boilers in almost all the schools, LED lighting, energy efficiencies. Particularly at the high school, the all the ceilings that were redone. It was based on a loan that was taken over time. This is our payment on that loan. Munis is the financial software that the community and the school system went to. The hundred thousand dollars represents our share of that. But then you see some just true repair and upgrade monies, plumbing a hundred and five thousand floors. You know, through Ed's office, they've done a great job replacing some of the older floors in the elementary schools. The age of the building often means that those floors have asbestos in them, so they have to be abated while that process is being done. So there's a hundred thousand in there for that. Classroom libraries are long term investments in literacy for elementary school aged children. So this will put classroom library sets and multiple class, multiple grades across the district next year. And then we'll complete that work the following year. And then the high school continues to need a lot of work and we've budgeted two hundred fifteen thousand from capital to get that work done. So that's just a sense of the capital monies that we typically get and how they'd be expended next year.
Any questions about the capital budget? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I did have a question. What was the capital of the money that we got for capital improvements from the town last year? I know we were in the midst of COVID and I'm sure it was reduced, but.
Well, one of the major projects that was done last year, correct me if I'm wrong, was the cafeteria at the Braintree High School. That whole floor was abated, which is a huge expense, and then completely redone. If you've been in the high school cafeteria lately, it looks beautiful. That was one of the major projects.
The accessibility of the high school.
Did you receive the usual amount of funding last?
I think it was a little bit lower because of, I don't recall which one. I'd have to, it was a smidge lower, but a little bit higher than this.
Thank you.
Historically, we had technology in there as well.
Yeah. All right, well, we were able to secure actually half a million dollars in technology grants. So some of the Chromebook purchases that we normally would use that money for, we were spending about three hundred thousand dollars a year. We were able to purchase with that grant. That grant should, you know, we're still discussing how to best expend it, but we're also looking at replacing a number of switches across the district that have just end of life and need to be upgraded. So we were fortunate in that regard, that it allowed us to instead address the literacy issues at the elementary level, which has been work that we've been going towards for the last five years. It's the workshop model. And so it's age appropriate, developmentally appropriate classroom library sets for every elementary classroom in the in the district.
Thank you. Any other questions? Additional administrative updates?
That is all I had for this.
No other administrative updates? Okay, then moving on to from the school committee, school committee student representative updates.
I wanted to talk about the pep rally that we had after the Credit for Life Fair. Basically, it was a bunch of clubs coming together to show pride for the school. So it highlighted diversity and respect for others. And we basically all just came together and truly showed what like Braintree High was about.
And I just want to add, today marks the first day of spring sports at Braintree High, which is exciting. I'm a member of the track team, so we got to practice today. First time having like a normal season in the spring for two years, so it's pretty great, yeah.
That's been good too.
Yeah, it is.
Keep sharing that. Any questions from the committee? No? Moving on to make a course's update.
I'm sure we're going to get one this.
Since he's absent, this angle, we'll just skip over that and we'll catch up with them next time. Policy and Education Subcommittee update, Ms. Tuffy.
The Policy and Education Subcommittee met on March seventeenth. And our first order, I believe that's the second reading of public comment policy that the public comment to the beginning of of meeting rather than at the end.
Were there additional changes you made between last meeting and this meeting based on the comments?
No.
No, okay. Are there any questions from the committee about the? This is the second reading, so if we're going around no questions. Do I have a motion to approve BEDH public comment at school committee meetings? I have a motion by Mr. Lynch and a second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, so as of next meeting, a public comment will be at the beginning of the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. It'll run for ten minutes. People have the opportunity to speak for two minutes. We will be doing Zoom and people present in the meeting. There is a sign up sheet. If you're present in the meeting and would like to speak, we ask that you sign up. And if you're, you do Zoom, well, when we get to that point, we'll open up the lines and Mr. Lee will will coordinate the the questions. So beginning next meeting, we'll be taking up, we will be acting on this policy. Thank you to the committee for their work on this policy.
We also are moving our four policies to the full school committee by unanimous vote for our first reading. The first, the first policy is an update to the field trip policy to language about medications. The Braintree school nurses are licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They can delegate nursing care to field trip staff on overnight, out of state field trips or out of country field trips. So for overnight, out of state field trips, parents should speak to field trip staff about the care their child might require or the possibility that they might accompany their child on the trip. And for students traveling abroad, they're able to travel abroad, they should ensure enough to administer their own medicine. That was the first policy that we were proposing the update to. And the next three were just continued review of the Massachusetts Association of School Committee recommended policies. We voted in favor of adding written policies regarding what are current practices in Braintree. First, programs for students with disabilities. Section five oh four states that Braintree will provide educational opportunities for all students in accordance with the requirements of state and federal statutes. Second, relations with non-public schools. School committee will approve private schools when it's satisfied that the instructional program equals the town's public schools. And Braintree schools will cooperate with private schools in matters of mutual benefit when the law does not expressly prohibit it. And finally, student teaching and internships. The school committee will approve official arrangements with colleges and universities and honor training guidelines. Braintree schools given the right to interview, accept or reject candidates. Teaching. Administration will ensure that performance evaluation be the requirements of the sending institution. Those items are for our first reading tonight. And finally, the committee discussed pending legislation that would prohibit use of the word lock as a mascot name is passed. Mr. Lee has directed the town's athletic director to postpone any uniform purchases where locks would be on the uniform until the legislature acts on the bill. And the subcommittee agreed to continue discussion around the mascot name. The next meeting will be on April twenty eighth at five P M.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy, here. Since these first four are first reading, and since the mayor and Mr. Diver are not here, so we'll leave these to the next meeting. We'll take them up to vote at the sec, at the next meeting. Are there any questions on any of these while we're discussing on these four policies? No, okay. We are moving on to Finance and Operations Subcommittee update. So that would be me. We met on Thursday, March seventeenth. We continued the discussion on the proposed centralized maintenance department. The DPW Director, Jim Ossenalt, and the Facilities Director, Mike McCordy, were both in attendance. We highlighted a number of questions that we had compiled regarding, but not including, excuse me, Subcommittee regarding the merger, including but not limited to cost benefit analysis, an implementation plan, the span of control, communication between the town and the Braintree Public Schools if this merger were to take place, reporting on progress, efficiency gains. And those questions were forwarded to the Chief of Staff, Chief of Staff, Tom. And again, the the Subcommittee Subcommittee is really doing its due diligence on this request. It's, this is a big ask, so we want to make sure that we get all of our our questions answered prior through the Subcommittee making any kind of a recommendation to the full committee. So we will continue to discuss that at our next meeting, which is this Thursday, the twenty fourth. We also took up the SOI, which we are going to take up in a minute. The SOI for the Braintree, for Braintree High School. And we also discussed the budget, which Mr. Lee has already covered. And as I said, as we've said repeatedly, it's fluid. We're going to continue to talk about it. We're going to continue to have discussions with the mayor. So that is the high level, the high level, the Subcommittee voted to move the SOI for Braintree High School forward to the MSBA. So we're making that recommendation to the full committee to move that forward. So with that, I ask my vice chair to make a motion to move the SOI forward for Braintree High School.
And with that, I will read the MSBA statement of interest. Braintree High School MSBA statement of interest, Braintree High School Committee MSB required vote language dated March twenty first, two thousand and twenty two. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March, I mean, on Monday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty two, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Braintree, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March tenth, two thousand and twenty two, of Braintree High School located at one twenty eight Town Street, Braintree, Massachusetts, which is described and, and explains to the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility. Priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And thereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding committed from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town Braintree or the Braintree School Department to filling an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So this is the formal motion. So now we have a motion to to move the SOI forward. We have a second, I have a second, Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. This is, I believe, the fifth year consecutively years.
The fifth year.
Put in an SOI for the high school. I think twenty eighteen, when I was on the school committee previously.
Started.
We started it, putting it in. And we needed to make this very formal language, and then now it goes to the town council and they will do the same.
Right, so the next up will be Ways and Means. It is a very formal process and we'll need those those votes as well on Ways and Means. It goes to town council. I believe they have a meeting on April twenty sixth. Our application is Our application is due on April twenty-ninth, so you know, in terms of schedule, we're in pretty good shape. You know, it is an ongoing process, as you just described. However, at the same time, if you look across the state, the MSBA has been able to assist a number of communities in large projects, taking care of a lot of the more dire buildings across the state where space has been a big issue. So the more time goes on, I think the more competitive we become. So we're still hopeful.
Absolutely. Okay. Public comment. We're at public comment. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? A comment, public comment? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom want to raise their hands and put it up?
I believe Mr. Cass is up. Mr. Cass?
Are you muted, Mr. Cass?
Yeah.
There we go.
Mr. Cass, you're unmuted on our side.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Could you speak up?
Oh, okay, so maybe just my headset. Okay, right. Thank you so much. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope everyone is well and enjoying the new spring weather. Sunday was really nice. Two things. Public comment, I disagree with moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting. And from my contacts in the community, rather than moving public comment to the beginning, we should keep it at the end and also have it at the beginning as well. Why not get public comment on what the, when the public comment should be, perhaps a survey? And then number two, the maintenance consolidation. In principle, I'm in favor, however, I'm I'm concerned that the effort will be just an effort to reduce expenses rather than take care of what maintenance needs to be done going forward for other schools. The program at the high school has been very successful. That's all been great. We need to continue the effort to do the same for the other schools. Could the school committee members ask the administration what their proposal is to do about funding for maintenance going forward? Will any savings be applied to new work on fixing the schools going forward? And what control and oversight will the school committee have on maintenance going forward? Will responsibility for school maintenance continue to be in oversight by the school committee? Or will it move to the council or the administration? Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Cass.
At this moment, I do not see any other hands raised.
If you've raised your hands and we don't see you, raise your hands. Could you put a comment in the, in the comment box of the chat? We have people in the chat. I don't know if you want to open up the chat, though.
There's one thing in the chat.
I'm just afraid that we've had people say in the past that they've tried to raise their hand and there's been issues. So I just want to make sure that we make every effort to include everyone.
I do not see anybody
Nor do I.
At description.
I can see, and nor do I. Okay?
Okay.
We'll assume we have seen, we have heard from everyone who would like to speak this evening. With that, that brings the meeting to the end. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobbleman?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned.